Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for October 3rd, 2016. Before we go on with regular business, I'd like to note the passing of Sam Bonassaro, one of our tax assessors and formerly Milford Housing Authority. Just want to acknowledge his time given to the community, service to the community, and wish our best to the family and friends of Mr. Bonassaro. With that, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Okay. Signing of the warrant?
I'll move.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Approval of the September 19th meeting minutes.
Motion, second it.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is there someone here who would like to speak? Okay, please. Mr. Wheelock?
Jamie Wheelock, and I am going to speak on a couple of different issues if I can manage to get through the variety of them.
Take your time.
I want to say how excited I was about the last meeting with the report for countryside's power purchase agreement that did not include an escalator clause. I don't even think we need the Renewable Energy Committee if we can actually start signing deals without escalator clauses in them. I haven't read the rest of the terms, and I would prefer less than 20-year terms for these arrangements, but mostly what a breakthrough to have a no escalator clause agreement in a solar project. Hooray. Very good news. I also wanted to speak about what the Finance Director was talking about last meeting. The language he used and the language the Selectmen used were very, I found it ambiguous and hard to discern what the subject was being talked about. But best as I could tell, it was about the injured-on-duty fund or the proposed injured-on-duty fund and whatever current system the town of Milford uses for a similar purpose. And the heavily depleted fund that currently exists is most likely depleted because of the tragic case of the police officer working a flag detail on Water Street. But none of those words came up specifically at the previous Selectmen's meeting. It was all very roundabout what was being talked about. I pay a certain amount of attention to issues in town. I was able to discern what it was. Maybe some other people are able to guess what they're talking about, or I think a lot of people don't even know what's being talked about when that conversation took place. Thirty years ago, when there was a more vigorous media situation, multiple quality papers in town and other media systems, maybe there was more active reporting about what's going on in town and how to decipher what might have been said at a meeting. That's not going to happen anymore. I don't see it happening anytime soon. Kevin Rudden does a pretty good job of trying to cover the bases, but there's a lot of bases. So, I'd like to speak about something that I spoke here at least three years ago, which is civilian flagmen, an issue which has been brought up in the state over and over again. It was not well received when I spoke about it years and years ago. Great reluctance from the board then. But I would just want to say that police make great flagmen, though I think many people probably believe they are overqualified for the work. I also have been told that civilian flagmen will probably not save the town any money, which is unfortunate, and maybe that could be reversed with more competition later, but even if it's not successful at reducing the costs per hour for flag operations, the single biggest, there's two ways that the town can save money by going over to civilian flagmen on roads that don't require official police flagmen, if that's the status it used to be. I don't know. The town will primarily save money in less liability payments in regards to injured-on-duty, and the other place that they'll be able to save money conceivably would be in scheduling issues that arise from rejiggering, covering the labor shortage that comes from the out-of-work officer if he was hurt sufficiently to be not at work, a situation that we're currently having. And I'm very, I don't want to say anything bad about the flagman who's hurt, and I hope he has his complete recovery.
As a police officer.
Right, the police officer.
So, is it, just out of curiosity, all things being equal, is it your position that it would have been less expensive had a flagman been injured as opposed to a police officer?
Well, this is an awkward part of the discussion I'm having, okay? Right now, no, I don't believe it would be less expensive, although it could possibly be not the town's liability. One of the reasons I'm talking to the Selectmen right now and possibly a future state rep is because this is a great issue to deal with here in Town Hall and maybe at the State House, flagman reform. Northeast Utilities paid $4.7 billion for N-Star. There is no shortage of money in the utilities business, and how the town of Milford is forced to absorb liability issues to flag details related to utility contractors, and I don't think that that project wasn't N-Star ever-sourced project specifically, but it's just the luck of the draw. The idea of transferring liability from utility companies who are making sufficient money, doing daily repetitious work throughout the state and Milford specifically, the fact that those liabilities are transferred to the taxpayers of Milford is something that the Selectmen should be paying attention to and maybe a state rep should also be paying attention to. No, it's not going to be less expensive medical bills for the person who was hurt, but I'm unclear why overqualified police officers need to be flagmen on roads that don't require police flagmen, and then the scheduling crises that arise from having a man or woman out because they've been, had the misfortune to be hurt on flag detail. That is an actual savings right there. So, yes, the liability issues are payments to the self-insurance fund could be reduced if we would use many fewer police flag details. And if, heaven forbid, an actual incident happened again and it had serious financial implications, they wouldn't necessarily be, the implications would be of a different scale if it were not a police officer. It wouldn't affect the police department, it would affect whatever the civilian contractor who is in the flag person business. It's a very awkward subject, and I don't want to take pleasure in transferring risk to yet a different person, but right now, the town of Milford is taking the hit, as far as I know. I could be completely wrong on this, but...
And you could be, because there could, there are certainly third-party claims that would allow for a town recoup that should somebody be found negligent or...
Right. Although, and maybe the recouping would even cover the scheduling and overtime and the hassles at the police station to fill empty slots until permanent hiring is, I mean, in other words, the implications of that one incident are reached beyond the personal implications for the person. I don't need to dwell on that very much, but I would love it if Milford would work towards the possibility of using civilian flagmen whenever possible, flag people, and also that a state rep in the future could pay careful attention to the issue of actually bringing about effective change.
You're talking with the Board of Selectmen, so we, you know, whether somebody's a future or anything remains to be seen, and we can...
Great. So, that's the awkward issue of the self-insurance fund, injured-on-duty, and civilian flagmen's versus probably overqualified flagmen. The other thing is, if you're self-insuring on flagmen detail, flag person detail, the town should probably have an incredibly vigorous safety protocol that is self-monitored and motivated. Just because you're an excellent police officer doesn't necessarily mean you are constantly diligent about the safety issues that are happening at the flag detail job, but this is a petty discussion for another time.
Okay.
Specifically right now. The other issue I wanted to talk about right now was town meeting reforms, because we've got a town meeting coming up, and I would like to weigh in on at least one change that could be enacted for this upcoming town meeting. The change is about a bit of stagecraft currently, and for as long as I've gone to town meeting, maybe 10-ish years, the moderator sits front and center of the stage in a way that gives the room the feel of the moderator show. And I've been to other town meetings where the moderator sits to the left or the right side of the stage and ably conducts the order of the meeting from the side of the stage. This is a very subtle change, but the other plus of having the moderator sit to the side of the stage is he doesn't actually have to get out of the way, as the current moderator does multiple times a meeting when a visual aid thing is done. So, I think that that is an effective and easily enacted change that changes the tone of how the moderator is positioned over the meeting. He can do his moderating, but not from front and center. That's a pretty small change, but I think it has some value. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Next item for public hearings and scheduled appointments is the Lucky Nine Entertainment License Request. You can go ahead and step up to the front seat in front of the microphone, please. And for the benefit of those at home and for the proceedings here, I'll read from a notice notifying Ms. Thai V. Tran about the meeting this evening, and specifically the meeting purpose, or this portion of the meeting purpose is to go over a license application, request for a live entertainment license for Lucky Nine Billiard and Bar Corporation at 119 East Main Street, Milford. The request for hours of, oh, I'm sorry, those are the days and hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. The name of the applicant is obviously Thai V. Tran. And the request is from Monday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., and as is customary, we request input from department heads, and we have a department head review form. The building commissioner notes that this is an allowable use, occupancy load is 120, and it's restroom handicapped accessible. Town planner, no change in actual use. Tax collector notes, a personal property tax overdue of $36.94. It's $36.94. Town treasurer has no outstanding tax liens. Fire chief has no issues or concerns, and the police chief has no issues or concerns. So, why don't you explain a little bit about what you want to do and what you'd like to have there?
Oh, we just want to get live entertainment, just to generate more customers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And thought about the venue, and you're requesting complete from, let me just make sure I have it right. Saturday, 12 to 1. I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, yes.
So, okay, so you're talking about small band type?
Right, small bands, live bands, probably like Fridays and Saturday night mostly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll go to the board members, see if there's any questions.
Thank you. What are your hours of operation during the week?
It's Monday through Sunday, 12:00, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. in the morning.
Okay. That's all through the week, Tuesday, Wednesday?
No, no. It's Monday through Fridays, we open at 4:30 to 12:00 p.m., but Friday, we stay late to 1:00 a.m. But the thing is, we have a few customers that call us and ask to have a birthday parties, or function parties, and they request to have a band or DJ, so we found out we cannot do that unless we get the license, so we're not allowed to do that, so that's definitely...
Are you looking to expand your hours of operation? I mean, what is your, what is your, what is your permit now? Do we have that, Rick, what the permit now is? I mean, I don't know why these hours would be different than your otherwise hours of operation.
During the weekends, the customer that requests to have a birthday parties, normally they want to do like a noon time, but we're told we're not opening the hours, but they want to do noon time until 4:00, before the open hours.
As a function, as opposed to opening.
Yes.
Do we know what the license is?
Yeah. Be the liquor license, 12 to 1. Those would be 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
All throughout the week?
So, he wants it consistent with the liquor license?
That's, okay.
It can be. It can be.
Yes, okay.
What his hours are, obviously.
So, you're looking just to have these hours consistent with what your liquor license is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're talking about, you had here a live DJ, a live DJ and live band, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't have any problems.
I don't have any questions.
Actually, neither do I. It's pretty straightforward. Form's clear. What you filled out was clear. It's consistent with other businesses, licensed liquor establishments within the area, so I don't have any concerns. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And you can just see Town Administrator Rick Valani tomorrow, and...
I've spoken with them, they're all set.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Very good. You're welcome.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Next on the agenda, we have Town Administrators' Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. First, just an update on the fixed bus route. Carl Don Magella of the MWRTA has met with the managers of the Rowland Green and Groves housing complexes. The managers have agreed to promote the use of the bus route by their residents. Carl is going to set up an outreach program at both facilities. He also will be having another outreach at the senior center to distribute senior and disabled Charlie cards. In another few weeks, we should have some statistics also as to ridership issues that may have resulted. The Transportation Advisory Committee has been meeting, and they are also doing a lot of public outreach, as I think I mentioned last, last meeting. I also have an update on the accessible trail update. I've been informed that the engineering plan for the work to be done on the Upper Charles Trail to provide accessible enhancements for persons with low vision has been completed. The Highway Surveyor will be scheduling the work, which will include an audio-guided tour on a smartphone, English braille sign with a stand to be placed in the gazebo at the turnaround, as well as an accessible bench to be placed at the gazebo at the turnaround. Safety signs will also be placed along the trail. Special word of thanks to the Friends of the Milford Upper Charles Trail and the Milford Commission on Disability for helping to fund this important project. I also have an update from Jen Ward, the Milford Youth Center Director. She wants to thank a number of people for help on projects at the center. First, A&amp;P Bellingham, Consigly Construction and 9am Landscaping, they will be donating labor and materials to properly landscape the front entrance. Work to be done will include planting of a new tree, pruning existing trees, placement of memorial pavers, womb, plants, and granite benches. The second project is a project under the Day of Caring Project. Sunovian Pharmaceutical employees, they painted all the main basement walls with paint, and that paint was donated by Benjamin Moore. Third project was completed by the Vineyard Church in Hopkinen. Their members put up walls in the movie room. And finally, a word of thanks to Paul Johnson. He installed rugs in the movie room and weight room, as well as refurbishing all the mezzanine floors, added substantial savings to the youth center in the town. And also, Jen wanted me to know that Waters Corporation invited eight young people and two staff members to the Patriots game yesterday. They enjoyed lunch, pictures with former players, cheerleaders, and Pat the Patriot. And finally, Jen wants me, wants you to know that the rentals of the facility have begun in September. They are renting both during the week and on weekends. They have hired three new full-time employees and five part-time employees, as there has been an increase not only in the rentals, but also the after-school membership. So, she will be providing an update to the board periodically to let the board know the status of the facility and any issues that might arise. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I know surprise that, you know, as the facility grows and the great work that was done to improve the facility, that, you know, rentals would go up and activity would increase. And, you know, I hear consistent names. I don't have, I didn't list all of them, but recurring theme is Benjamin Moore and certainly Consigly Construction, who have both dissipated in donations across the community and specifically on our public buildings. So, I want to thank all of those, and appreciate Jen Ward working hard to get those and to work with those companies. Thanks to all of them, and I know letters will be going out thanking them as well.
Yes.
Should come from the board as well, not just the youth center. That'd be great. We'd get that. Any thoughts or comments from the board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just two thoughts first. Let me commend the Transportation Committee for the work that they're doing. I spoke to one of the members last week and was very impressed with the extent of outreach that they're doing, primarily to the apartment complexes, which, you know, Rick referenced. You know, when that committee was put together, I didn't really envision that as kind of a main part of their focus, but, you know, to their, to their credit, they saw that as a need, and, you know, they've addressed that need, and I think they're doing a nice job to try to get the word out about this, this bus route, which I think is vital to its success. And then also, Jen Ward and the Youth Commission have just been very, very active in terms of soliciting what you've, you know, just heard, in terms of the private donations to really augment the work that was done over there and expand, you know, the usable area very quickly for that facility. Very, very proactive, you know, very organized, and just doing a great job as the, as the director there.
Agreed. Will?
I know, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, thank you, Brian. Next item on the agenda is old business. And under old business, we have warrant articles that we can discuss. You know, I, as a matter of process, what I, I guess what I'm going to ask is that this board adopt Board of Selectmen article, articles, Finance Committee articles, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Finance Director as under our purview. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to look these warrant articles over. And I'd ask for a motion to support folks that work for us and the article that would make, you know, a transfer to stabilization is the only odd one, but again, appointments of ours. So, again, it's Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee article, single Fire Chief article, the single Police Chief article, and the three Finance Director articles. Is there a motion?
Yeah, well, I'll make the motion. I'm just trying to get caught up with you here. You've got the Fire Chief, you've got the Police, and what was the last one you referenced?
Police, Fire, and Finance.
Oh, Finance Director?
Yes, the Director of Finance.
Yes, I would make a motion to support all of those articles with the caveat, and I know it's something that we've discussed, you know, I'd like to get some more information on Article 16, the substance abuse outreach program, just before town meeting, just to make sure that we, you know, have a firm set of guidelines going forward, so we can articulate exactly how we view this project going forward. I know we did get correspondence from the Town Administrator in Hope Dale, which is very...
Seeking to join us, yeah.
Optimistic, seeking to join the program, and I have full faith in the Chief and Amy Leoni, but I think going forward for the town meeting, we need to have that information.
Agreed. So, and as an update on that, so there's, there's not a lot new, what it is an expansion of services where the police department can call upon intervening services from JAG. It's an expansion of that, where we can have people available at more hours and more staff is the intended use of that. Again, it's intended to be regional. The 28,000 is Milford's piece of it, but we do expect, as you mentioned, Hope Dale possibly joining in. We expect other communities to join in. As you know, the state, the state fund was set up as a regional fund, but that, those dollars would quickly be depleted if, if we're not going to try to ante up locally. And towns already acknowledge, I think in the discussions with Rick and Amy and others, that, that they're already spending that money, they're just spending it in different ways, and would like to consolidate it and make sure that they have access to not only treatment, but addiction prevention, working with the hospital, working with, what is it, Riverside, sorry, who helps make space available. It was a week ago, just as an update to this board, that I met with Amy Leoni, Frank Sabah, the Chief of Police, to talk about exactly what that was, and an outline was presented at that time, and people were providing feedback, so I'll try to get that to the board this week, so you can at least read it and get a better understanding of it. But, yeah, that outline exists, the Chief has gone over it with Amy, we reviewed it with Frank and myself, and it's a good question.
Because I can see this as an article generating discussion at town meeting, and I think we have to be clear in terms of the program that we're proposing.
And I think it's important that this board come up to speed, not just on how this can augment what we're doing, but really baseline on what's already happening. I know, and I'm not suggesting anybody's not aware of that, but I just want to make sure that we're clear, and I know this board is probably one of the few boards in the Commonwealth that constantly get updates as a matter of practice from the Chief on when there has been an OD, when there has been a death, we're flagged, we're texted, we're made aware of that. You know, I think it should be a practice across the state, I've commended the Chief for that communication. If it's not in front of us, we may just not otherwise know unless we read it in the newspaper. So, I think it's a great idea. I know the Town Administrator is also on that distribution, but coming up to speed and understanding what exactly the services are, that the outreach programs and, you know, when somebody ODs, not only is there police involvement, but there's treatment counselors that get called, they're going to the house of the individual, they're meeting with the relatives of that individual, and most certainly when somebody has passed. I think a year ago, we had four within the community, and I think we're up to 12 or 13 already this year.
That's correct.
And we're not through the year. So, good point, and I'm happy to do that now that that outline is available, and I'll get that out. Frankly, I've been doing a little bit of traveling, so that's probably what held me up, but...
I will second the motion as Brian presented it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll vote. That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just one, there are two treasurer articles, would the board want to, since the treasurer is now...
Yes, you're right.
Would you want to vote on those or not? Just bring that to your attention.
That's the paying off of the callable bonds?
Yes.
Yeah, we did talk about that. And consultant actuary of valuations for $4,000.
I would move to issue a favorable recommendation, I guess, on both articles.
Second it.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Rick, for not letting me miss that.
And then, are you ready, are you leaving this item now?
Oh, no. If you'd like to talk further.
I was just going to say, for the board's information, on Article 23, the Army Renovation Committee will be passing over that article for the air conditioning, and will, well, we have favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee on the heating article. You know, we're hoping that we don't need to utilize that, but that's going to be kind of a wait-and-see, once we have the contractor do their repairs and then administer the system.
Okay. So, do you have a request there?
No, that's just an FYI.
Oh, FYI, okay. Is there any information on this type? Because that's one of the ones that I'd like to get some information, background on.
Information on what?
The, the article for heating.
Well, there's an abundance of information. I guess it's, you know, where you want to start.
Pass it by paper.
Yeah.
I can read it later.
It's, you know, was presented at the Finance Committee. Basically, the heating system was flagged down throughout the entire project. You know, we did not... You know, we did not replace the furnace. We were told at the time that the furnace has probably a life expectancy of 10 years. So rather than add a half a million, maybe $750,000 to the project, we elected to go forward with the system as is. And what resulted was repairs from the contingency fund along the piping, you know, throughout the building. At this point, there are basically, I think, two repairs left, one which needs to be done, which we funded. And the architect and the engineers believe that that's going to rectify the situation, but we're not going to know until we turn the system on. And if not-
Just wait a couple of days, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. And if not, I think there's only one more move that they can make. And that would be what the, you know, $30,000 would be to cover. But, you know, it's a very old system. And, you know, we made the decision to try to live within the system. And we basically chased down the pipes all throughout the building for the various valves and pipes. And we're down to the bitter end now.
Okay. Next, Rick has a community compact update. Good news from the Governor's Office.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I did receive notice that the Governor has in fact opened up a fiscal year 17 Community Compact Program. Couple of changes. Applications can be submitted by towns who did not apply in fiscal year 16. I just wanted to point out two things to the board. One, on the information technology best practice. We have until February 15th, 2017, to apply. And then, beginning March 1st through April 1st, we can apply for a Community Compact IT Grant Program. This is a competitive grant program. Requests can be up to $200,000. They can include related one-time capital needs, such as technology, infrastructure, upgrades, indoor purchase of equipment or software, incidental costs such as planning, design, installation, training, et cetera. So that is something that I think the board might want to take a look at or have me take a look at, along with Andrew Diorio, our IT manager. And the second thing I just wanted to point out to the board, there's a new best practice, the Public Accessibility Best Practice. And this would, is very specific. It would be undertaking an Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and develop a transition plan to comply with federal civil rights laws that require public buildings to be accessible to persons with disabilities. Now, the last plan done by the town was in October of 2007. I have been periodically looking into this with the Commission on Disability, excuse me. They would like to undertake and be part of this self-evaluation. It could be an opportune time for the town to receive additional guidance and assistance through the Community Compact. It will allow us to reevaluate all our policies and practices, our buildings, et cetera. So I just wanted to point that out. That is a new best practice that would be available to us at this time, so.
Let me give you some quick thoughts, at least that I have, Rick. Anytime we're trying to assess our compliance with federal laws and specifically civil rights laws as they relate to accessibility for handicapped people, I think it's generally a good idea. I'd agree with the Commission on Disability personally. I think the Technology Best Practice makes sense. And I know that we've discussed this from meeting to meeting. And we've discussed various best practices within the Community Compact Program administered by Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito. And, you know, it does make available to us grants that otherwise are not going to be available to people who have not applied. So there are a lot of reasons to do this. What I hear you saying, though, is that we're going to insert Public Accessibility Best Practice, or it's your recommendation, instead of transportation and carry on with the Technology Best Practice. I'm okay with that, by the way.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking at. You can have three.
We talked about transportation. Yeah, but Rick, you know, it's so-
My feeling is we've got the MWRTA. We really have an expert assisting us there. We have a advisory committee. So yes, that's kind of what I, that's what I am recommending.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm fine with that. No issues with that. I think these are two great places. I did want to take advantage, as you knew, and as this board knew, of the Community Compact Program. And if you recall, it was on, then it was off until they figured out how to fund it. They found out, they found a funding mechanism, and they're going to start it again. So, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I would just not put additional work on your plate as it related to the accessibility piece. And I know you play a role in that. But instead, ask the Commission on Disability to be the point person.
I spoke with many members of the, and there'll be ample assistance there for me.
All right, we'll go to the board members. Will, any thoughts?
No, I think this is great. I think we've been waiting for this to open up again. And I appreciate Rick's recommendations and agree with him wholeheartedly, so.
Okay.
Those are two good issues to take on.
Brian?
Yeah, I don't see any downside. I was an advocate to start this last year on the technology. And I'm certainly, certainly continue to be an advocate. And I think the self-evaluation with the ADA is-
Good start.
Very good. That's something that I know has been kind of on our plate for a little bit and just hasn't gotten the attention that it needs. So I think this will be a great time to address that.
So Rick, when do you anticipate those applications going in?
I would like to do it within the next 30 days, both of them, you know. They're not difficult applications, to be very honest with you.
Can it be done in the next couple of weeks, you think?
Sure, because Andy's already started.
Yeah, I know we've talked about this. There was work on the table.
Sure. Look to do it for the next meeting?
Yeah, we put it on the shelf. I'd be happy to. We put it on the shelf, and I think that's just, I just want to know that we buttoned it up. Because my sense is they're only going to be able to accept so many communities.
Well, they do them on a rolling basis. So first serve, the sooner you submit, the better off I would think we would be. No problem. That's fine.
All right, outstanding. Next, we have a memo from correspondence under new business from the Police Chief. And let me read it. "The owner of the salon 129 Central Street has asked that the Board of Selectmen would designate two parking spaces immediately in front of 129 Central Street, between the Brazza Parking Lot driveway and the driveway at 131 Central, designated parking limit two hours. Given the large volume of vehicles with people attending the dance school, is now located the Brazza Facility at the corner of Central Street and North Bow. And because the Brazza Facility has two parking lots located behind and opposite the facility, this restriction would allow customers to the salon to park and not adversely impact the dance school or other businesses in the area. And the Chief recommends the Board of Selectmen approve this parking restriction." And I just have one comment to add to this. You know, there's a lot of opportunity in that area now and a lot of challenges in that area. The challenges I'll take, given where, you know, we were 10 years ago on, or so, on Central Street, the growth of businesses, the improvement of the area, the upkeep in the area, has made this a vital part of the town again. And there was a period of time where it obviously had gone into some decline, but we see businesses trying very hard. We have the Chief's recommendation. Go to the members, any thoughts?
I'll move to support the recommendation. Second it.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Any new business from the members of the board, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. I received an email, I think some of us did, regarding some parking issues on Court Street. And it also included some photographs. And I'm not sure if, you know, we're starting to see the outgrowth of the changes that we made on the commercial vehicles with the municipal parking lots. But specifically on 33 Court Street, the residents are having difficulty with vehicles being parked in front of their residents and also on neighboring property. So there's a couple of things that I'd like to request. There was an indication in one of the emails that the resident was seeking a handicapped parking space on Court Street. I'd like to have the Town Administrator reach out to this individual, and I can provide you the information later to see if in fact she's still requesting that and we can facilitate that for her and get it before this board to allow that to occur. I'd also like to request, as we've done in the past, to have the Town Engineer and the Police Chief evaluate the off-street parking to see if there's any changes that they would recommend. I know there's no parking on one side. I don't know if that is the best way to handle it, or maybe that needs to be adjusted. And then I'd like to get a report from the Building Inspector and the Health Agent as there were questions in terms of occupancy of a particular building, along with the number of vehicles that were parked at that building. And I can, you know, for privacy-
I think I had sent it to you, Rick.
I think, yes.
And he's going to have people look into it, Chief and others. And, yeah, let's follow up on it.
Well, we got some emails, and I saw those. But I think it needs to be taken maybe to another level.
Will, any other new business?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, under correspondence, we have a double poll report.
Same as the last one. Two in, two out.
Two polls in, two polls out, okay.
I did reach out, Mr. Chairman, to the Police, Fire, and Highway Sfer, as you requested. And they do have some ideas as to maybe which polls and which areas we should concentrate on. So those will be transmitted to National Grid to give certain polls priority over other polls.
Yeah, and I had asked for that priority listing of how they prioritized. And I'm still not clear how they prioritize. You know, let me just say this. I expect the Police and Fire, obviously, to come up with those double polls that we periodically see at intersections that block line of sight when this poll's right at the corner. Those would appear to be safety issues, the ones I get the most complaints about. But I also had another concern when I looked at the report. And it makes me wonder. And this is why I asked for the age report. I'm looking at a couple on Camp Street that have been there over six years, double polls. Others, three years, others, four years. And so I also want to make sure that we're not sending a message that the folks on Camp Street, if they don't complain, or they're less important because it's a more open road. But I want to make sure that I get an understanding, and I'd like to get an understanding from National Grid, how we can be in a situation where we've got double polls for six years. Because, again, those people on Camp Street pay taxes, and they're not less important than some of the others on more heavily-traveled roads. Not that Camp Street isn't heavily traveled now, but that just seems like an inordinate amount of time to have double polls, and we could check on that. So what I'd like to get is an understanding of those polls that have been there, you know, three-plus years. What's their plan? And I don't want to prioritize those above safety, where the Police and Fire Chiefs think that there's an opportunity to get rid of a double poll. But I'd like to get it as some priority, so that the age is considered in their prioritization. Otherwise, I think we unduly impact an area of town or a street of town, as in Camp Street as an example. And it's for some reason that I don't know why that is more difficult.
Okay, we'll get that for you.
Will, any thoughts on that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Next, we have Building Commissioner sign law update and enforcement and his plan going forward. Rick, did you want to talk to this at all?
Yes, just very, very briefly. Obviously, we have the new signed bylaw. It was adopted. Now, the next step is to enforce. So I asked the Building Commissioner to do a couple of things. One, come up with an enforcement plan, which I think he has outlined for you. And the second is, and this will change, but are frequently asked questions. It's great for me. It's great for people in my office.
Help me.
People in inspection, so. And I think people, I've had a number of phone calls with people, and they understand it, and we can provide this to them. It will go on the website. And we will start the enforcement process this week. We're going to start going around to businesses. The first approach will be, you know, just to inform them, advise them, give them a copy of the bylaw, give them a copy of these types of regulations. Give them a period of time so that they understand what we're looking for. But I think it's time we need to get the word out that we will enforce. Also, we want to look at some of those signs that seem to go on telephone poles also, that I've been getting a number of complaints about. So that's why I asked the Building Inspector to put this together for both the board and for people at Town Hall and for the general public.
Yeah, and I think there's an opportunity, another place, when folks take out papers. If Amy could insert a slip sheet with anything that they provide along with those papers to target specifically and focus on the changes that happened in May of last year. Is it related to political signs? Because, you know, this is the first year, and we really don't want people running afoul of it, forgetting or not knowing.
Correct.
It reflects poorly on candidates and, you know, it just could be, they just don't know. Yeah, 45 days means folks won't have to keep them up all winter. Comments from the board?
I think the Building Commissioner did a nice job in putting this summary together and also the frequently asked questions. He really boiled down a very, well, I shouldn't say very, but a somewhat complicated bylaw into real easy-to-read and easy-applied language. So it should be very helpful.
Will, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I'll dissect O'Brien's comments. I think this was, this is a good tool. And I think the FAQs was a really good touch.
Yeah, and the benefit of frequently asked questions is when somebody asks a question, or they hear it again for a third time, and it's not on there, they get to add it. So it's always a-
This will be a rolling document, yes, with additions, deletions, what have you.
Okay, so we have, yeah, please pass along our comments to John.
I will.
All right, and next, we have from Town Council, a memo. And I'll read from a September 29th, 2016 memo from Town Council, Moody to me, the Chairman of the Board, as it relates to a possible auction, a small parcel of land behind Asylum Street. And the brief portion, the brief outline of this is that owners of the land at 43 Asylum Street had approached Council Moody, or at least their attorney. It's shown on the assessor sheet as 30-0-54A. See if there's any interest in the town using this land. Jerry guided that council that we did take this land as a result of unpaid property taxes. And again, it's a small sliver of land. And that Jerry made sure, that he made clear that the only way that could be accomplished is by auction of the property to the highest bidder. And if his client is successful, they could retain that property. He goes on to explain why at least that may have gotten lost in probate through the death of a family member. According to the Treasurer's report, or the Treasurer's Office, the town is owed $875. That was back in 2006, before we took it. Jerry's recommending, given the size of the property and the amount of money owed, that he's looking for a recommendation that we authorize them to sell after auction for a price not less than $1,000 to at least recoup the taxes and charges associated with the taking. Is there any thoughts from the members of the board?
I'll be glad to make a motion to designate the Treasurer as the tax title cost custodian. Authorize them to sell the described parcel after auction for a price not less than $1,000.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. As always, Jerry does a good job in explaining the background behind something. There are no matters of executive session. We've dealt with all the topics associated with this meeting. So there will be no executive session. I'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you and good night.